Okay, we'll call this meeting to an end. This is the Delaware County Commissioner meeting. It's Monday, November 16th, 2020. Time is 9:02. Let's all open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Reagan.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Brooke.
Here.
Very good. Okay, we have a public hearing to assign a tax sales certificate to a nonprofit. Is there anyone here to speak about that?
We'll make a motion when we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, we have appointments to the Emergency Communications Center Board. That's going to require two commissioners, I believe.
Yes. The, according to interlocal agreement that was adopted by the county and the city, the county commissioners have two appointments to that particular board. The city council had an appointment, the county council has an appointment, and the mayor's on the board by virtue of his position. The city council appointed Anitra Davis to the board. So, the county council, I presume, will meet at their meeting later this month to make their appointment.
I'll nominate Commissioner Henry and Commissioner King to serve on that board.
I'll second it.
All right. James and I were nominated by Sherri. Seconded, roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Give them something else on their plate.
Yeah, yeah, we need something else to do. Let's, we have another one for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll nominate Mike Jones.
I'll second that.
We have a nomination of Mike Jones and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Congratulations. Mr. Jones. All right, approval of the minutes, November 2nd, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Kyle, is there anyone out there besides the sheriffs? Is the Health Department out there? The Health Department? Anyone from the Health Department? Okay. Okay, contracts and agreements for approval. Two public notices, Delaware County Farm Ground, John?
Yes. The lease is up for the farm ground at the highway or near the Highway Department. So, it's time to publish a notice in the paper to get the bids out for leasing the farm ground. I also included bids for about 41 acres at the 3100 South Tillotson, near the new Justice Center. For two separate ones. We'll see if there's anybody who wants to bid on that. So, we'll...
And that one's just a two-year bid?
That's just a two-year bid because of possible development out there.
John, on the one out by the new Justice Center, is it just going to be doing like the hay or the straw that's out around? It won't be tilling it up, planting it with crops, to where if we get somebody that wants to come in, we don't have to wait eight, nine months for the crops to come up? Or are we going to have to pay them for the crops if we get? That's the only thing I'm, I, we're wanting that to develop.
Sure.
And I really don't want to sit there and have a company come in at that location and want to go in, but we have to wait for the crops to be harvested before they can come in and do anything with it?
I would, so I think you're okay with a potential contract with hay?
With them cutting it? I'm fine with that because we can go in and stop that at any time. But if the ground's tilled up, you have beans, corn out there, then, you know, what will we do then if we have a developer that wants to go in there and actually develop that? I'd hate to put them on hold and lose them somewhere else.
Well, that was one reason why I limited it to two years instead of four years.
Yeah.
And we could certainly put that, we could put that restriction in there that that is a possibility, that they need to be prepared for that.
Yeah.
And that would limit the number of farmers, plus also limit what they would want to do. I still think that a two-year contract wouldn't get a whole lot of interest to do a lot of corn and beans because it, the ground would need more
Right.
work than that. That's a lot of work for just a two-year contract.
Okay.
But we could put that in there.
I just don't want to have something where it's going to hold us up on any development in that area.
Okay.
So, you're going to add that, then?
Yes, I can.
Okay. And then the farm ground at, out of the Highway Department, did you take off the lane that was put in or that's going to be put in by the Sheriff's Department? I can't remember.
I think we did last time, or we amended it last time because that was put in.
I think you're right. You're right. I think you're right. We did.
You said it didn't change too much from?
It, it, we had more or less the acreage there. They pay us for what they actually farm. I give an approximate total, and whatever that is, whatever certified by the Area Conservation Service, Soil Conservation Service, I mean, then that's what we get paid on. But we made that modification two years ago, I think it was, when the sheriff put that.
Yeah. You're right. It's not, it's not planted now, so. Okay, thank you. What's the?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve these agreements in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Now, we have a Baker-Tilly agreement, Steve?
This is to hire Baker-Tilly to do our annual GAAP report. Mr. Raff reviewed the contract and sent it back to me and said it was okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agreement with Baker-Tilly in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. All right, next is BIS agreement. Emily Anderson.
Morning, Commissioners. Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. This is our annual contract with BIS, but I wanted to present it to you so I could explain because at the new facility, you had already paid for the new equipment. This is for some equipment that's not covered beneath that. So, this is for juvenile equipment, which is outside of that contract, and then software for the equipment, which is not included in that contract. And then we purchased that portable recording equipment, so if we ever had to do a hearing outside of the courts, we have that. And then also our screen capture, which is for Zoom hearings. So, this is all outside of the equipment that you paid for in the contract you did for the new facility. So, I just wanted to explain that this isn't double-dipping on that contract. So, I just need this approved for our annual contract for BIS.
And you have the money lined up?
Now, this comes out of my budget.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the BIS contract in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thanks. Next is LexisNexis.
Yes, this is a contract we sign now every three years to get us a better deal. Instead of going up seven percent, five to seven percent, it's a 3.5% increase on law books for the judges. So, we go into a contract every three years with them, and that's what this is. So, we did this about three years ago for the first time.
I move we approve LexisNexis.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Actually, I use this service, too. Mine went up seven percent, so you're getting a good deal.
Yep.
Good.
Better get on this program.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
But just a minute. If we could, Mr. President, at the bottom of the page of memorandum of understanding, that's with the courts?
Yes.
For the use of this facility, since Emily's standing there?
This has to do with that coop plan that I presented last time. We were going to do a memorandum of understanding to use this courtroom in case we ever had to, if the main facility was unusable. So, we went to, John drafted the memorandum of understanding. All the judges approved on their end. I just need to get your signatures, then I'll get their signatures as well.
We'll make a motion when we approve the memorandum of understanding.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the court using this room in the event of an issue. In a second, roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Great Midwest Insurance Company, Ms. McCammon.
Pam McCammon, Human Resource Director. This is our insurance plan that we're finally getting finalized for next year. And first of all, I want to thank John Brooke. We spent countless hours on this with the employees being number one on our minds. And this is, I'm going to go ahead and review a little bit, Commissioners, on what we come up with. The premium, we tried everything in the book to get our rates down. And by doing that, we have kept our premiums the same. We are flat, the same as we were for the last four years. Everything is this, and we're the same. The premiums did not go up. But we did have to raise the deductibles $1,000 to do that. You can ask John, we tried everything in the book, didn't we, John? This was the best plan we come up with. So, and I thank the Commissioners for trusting us to do this, and we're just ready to get it signed.
This is the health insurance for the, for the county employees. The, part of it went up, part of it went down, part of it, we had a good year this year. We made some changes to some of the, we made a change to the deductible and the backs them out of pocket, just increased that a little bit to help with the costs so that there wouldn't be a cost increase for the employees. And we had some stopgap insurance that we changed over, so it's a dollar-for-dollar exchange that we get on a reduction of our premium. So, all in all, I think it's a good plan, and it, keeping the employees healthy is an important part of it.
That's right.
This was all part of the budget process, too. We did everything we could to help the council with the budget. And also, like John said, we didn't want the employees to have to take an increase on insurance. So, we appreciate you guys working on this for us.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the insurance agreement in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you. All right, next we have Ashton Land Surveyors.
Yep. Good morning. My name is Kathy Van Ice. I'm from Ashton Land Surveyors at 325 West Washington Street here in Muncie. We are currently working with a situation where a property owned by a William and Mary Harmon, their property is zoned R5. The owner to the north and west is a C. Matthew Cook. He would like to purchase some land of theirs of .83 to combine with his own home. His home is zoned F, as in for farming or agriculture. And we are trying to get this rezoned from R5 to agriculture because his intention is to build a pole barn on that land, and we can't do that under R5. And we cannot combine the property with two different zonings, and he needs to combine it so that he can have one parcel. And this has been endorsed.
Good, good.
Marty Moody, Executive Director of the Plan Commission. And I just, you probably already know this is, this is what Mr. Henry was probably going to say, but ordinance number 2020-021 is actually the ordinance that was filed dealing with the rezoning that Kathy is talking about. So, it's coming up on your agenda under, actually, it says ordinance is for first reading, but since it's already been to the Plan Commission on November 5th, this would be considered the second reading. So, anyway.
This is out off State Road 28, so it's, it's not really close to an addition or anything like that.
And like, like I say, the, the, it's up to you when you want to do it, but actually, the, on the backside of the agenda, it's already listed for your consideration under.
I was getting ready to make a motion. Maybe just go ahead and
Yeah, yeah.
A motion would be to adopt ordinance 2020-021.
Yep, that's what I was getting ready to.
So, James makes that motion?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on ordinance 2020-021. Roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to, I want to have the, I think the Health Department's back there. Could someone, Bob, could you have the Health Department come in, please?
Yeah, there's two seats for them up front.
But they're waiting on somebody who always come back to them.
They're waiting on someone else? Okay. Let's go ahead and talk about the emergency disaster declaration, and then hopefully their other person will be here by then. John, you want to talk about that?
Sure. Emergency Declaration 2020-19. This emergency declaration that I drafted, and I highlighted for you the changes in it, but this flows with the governor's latest executive order. I think it's 20-48. Because of the increase in COVID cases, and since our last emergency declaration on November 2nd, there have been 710 cases in Delaware County alone. This extends the emergency declaration to December 7th, which is your next meeting, incorporated the executive order. It obligates everybody to wear a face mask while operating and conducting business in the county building. Employees are to wear face masks except at their desks if they're socially distant apart. But everybody's to wear them in the common areas. Department heads, elected officials, and this is language from the executive order, are to reduce the number of employees to congregate and break rooms or common areas. Members of the public are to wear masks. There are, we're in the orange zone because we have a score 2.0, 2.5. I think we're still in the orange zone, at least currently. But we're close enough that we could get in the red zone pretty quick. I think we're just one or two tenths away from being in the, in the red zone in this county. So, you're stopping any events of people greater than 50 from occurring. You get in the red zone, automatically this would kick in. Any events of gatherings of 25 or more would be prohibited. Businesses are required to place clearly visible signs that notifying face coverings are required. They're only to admit those customers, vendors, and visitors wearing a face mask. And religious services are governed by the executive order. This, our emergency order will remain in place until December 7th, 2020, the end of business on that. So, we track the governor's order. I also watched his press conference along with the Health Department to make sure that I have everything covered. And so, the governor did give great latitude to the counties to adopt their own plan, but this seemed to be in order with where the Health Department was going and what I was talking with Mr. Bain about as well, so.
So, the question I have, I guess, is the, and I've talked to a few people about this. The, in the governor's order, he has given counties free rein to make more severe stipulations. Is that something that we want to take a look at as far as, you know, people are supposed to be wearing masks going in and out of businesses? Is it something we want to look at? I don't want to hurt business. However, I think it's important at this point that our citizens are protected and people are wearing masks inside businesses. Is that something that we want to pursue further as far as the governor's said he's putting $20 million up for education? And part of that is also for enforcement? Is that something we want to look at further? Is my question.
Me personally, I'd like to give it to the Health Department and start looking at a few other things that maybe we could add. Somebody that had contacted the COVID back in October and was extremely ill. This isn't a joke. I understand it affects people in different ways. But when you're lying in bed next to your wife and you want to tell her, "If I don't wake up in the morning, I love you, want the kids now," I mean, it's, it affects you and your family. Me personally, I'd like to look at a few things because, like I said, it affects people different ways. Some people can get a headache and a cough and be done with it. Some people can be a carrier and walk around and not even know. But then you have some people that, you know, they're in the hospital and
And I think, I think we need to come up with a way. I've, I speak with Jamie Bain, the Health Department Director, a bunch, sometimes multiple times a day. But I think they need assistance. So, I don't know. This may be something that we need to help them with. And I know, I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong if anyone has seen it, but I haven't seen any kind of regulation or requirement with that $20 million that the governor has, has put up. I don't know any stipulations on that yet, and I don't know that it's been released yet. But if we, we could obtain some of that money for enforcement purposes, I'd like to do that. I also contacted Kyle Friday, asked Kyle to make a sign. He made these signs and put it on our Facebook page and our webpage, I think, too. And so, businesses are required to have signage that you're supposed to mask up prior to going into business. And we do have those signs available for you. Kyle made them available for you, so you can print these signs off and put them on your front door if you are a business here in Delaware County. So, Kyle, thanks for, thanks for doing that. He did a good job, as always, even though I got in some trouble with some of the signs I've made in the past, but.
Is what it is.
Is what it is, yeah. But it's, it's very important, and thanks for doing that, Kyle. Good job.
Well, one thing we got to make people understand, too, that when you go into the restaurants, you go into the stores, when these people are asking you to wear your mask, please don't become confrontational with them, want to fight them. They're just doing their job. And I know there's a lot of people out there that, you know, they have a problem with wearing the mask. I can understand if it's under doctor's orders that they can't wear it for some reason, but don't take your frustrations out on your waitress, the person working at one of the stores that's standing out front telling you to put a mask on. Put it on, go in, do your business, and come out, take it off, get in your car, and go home. But, you know, like I said, somebody that contacted this and was very ill for over 20 days, I know what it's like, and it's, it's not a pretty picture, and it's not fun.
I also want to comment something a little further. You know, in the beginning of all this, we did shut down the county. We shut down the restaurants. We shut down everything, and we want to try to keep those open as much as possible. However, in some of the restaurants, I'm hearing that they are requiring a mask to come in, but when you sit down, you're sitting back-to-back with, with people. So, it needs to be clear that even though the restaurant's open, there still needs to be six foot, you need to have people six foot apart inside those businesses. So, some businesses are doing it, some are not, but let's make sure we try to encourage that social distancing inside the restaurants as well. Dr. Wilkinson's here. Would you like to go ahead and stand up the podium and speak? Could you go to the podium so we can hear you, please?
Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the November 7th, I believe, the governor's, you know, hourly, weekly Wednesday afternoon talk show, I call it the talk show. So, he was asked by one of the radio stations, you know, "What do I do? Why do I tell local health departments when they go in and they tell the people that they should be wearing masks, and they don't, and there's no enforcement? You know, what, what can we do?" So, then the governor's response is that the health departments or the local governments had enforcement policies or had the power of enforcement, and then said that Steve Cox, who is the Indiana Department of Homeland Security person, that he had gone to northern Indiana, some counties with the state fire marshal and had, had worked with them. So, then I called Steve. He referred me to Joel Thacker, who's with us here today, too. And Joel can tell you really what, what they've been doing in northern Indiana to get compliance, education, and trying to get people to realize this is serious. I mean, the hospital last week was at 106% capacity for ICU beds. And it's worse than it was in April. And I think we've got to take this more seriously. I really do. So, I brought Joel up here today. He came today. And so, what we're going to do is go to some businesses that have been issues for us. A lot of people think we have enforcement. The Health Department can enforce this. The only thing we can do is if they are non-compliant, we can pull their food permit or, you know, take it away for a day or so, make them have a, you know, staff meeting. This is, this is, this is a requirement. You need to do this. And we have done that. And then if they, if it's a bar, we can have their liquor license pulled. But we can't, other than that, if it's just a regular store, you know, flower shop, whatever, we have, we have no jurisdiction to do anything for those, you know, to enforce it with those people. And that's a problem. So, we're going to try to do some education today. I've got a list of some of the businesses here that have been repeat violators, I guess I'll call them, and see with Joel and some help from the Fire Department here if we can get better compliance with some more education and let them know how serious this is. I'll let Joel talk a little bit.
Donna, just real quick, I have a question for you, or I guess a comment. Could you elaborate a little bit on the, in the governor's order? It says that at this particular time, because Delaware County's in the orange zone, you can have 50 people at a gathering. Anything greater, they're supposed to ask for, or get a plan together and have the, the Health Department permit that?
Yes. They said, they, what they do is they, they can email Jamie and send them their plans, like if it's a, if it's a outside event or whatever, to have a drawing of how you, you know, where the booths are going to be, say if it's a Christmas, you know, fair or whatever. And then like how the bathrooms are supposed to be used, where the sanitizer is, who's going to, you know, require, that they should require masks. So, they submit this to Jamie, and then he looks over the plans, and we discuss it.
But you guys aren't going to do that for this particular order, correct? You're not going to approve anything over 50?
Correct.
Okay. And that's, you guys voted on that last week, I think?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, there's no reason to send?
Not, no.
You're not going to require, you're not going to let anything over 50 people, any kind of function over 50 people occur, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And if we go to red zone, it will be over 25?
We go to red zone, now we're down to 25.
Okay, all right.
I mean, I don't, I can see us getting in the, I thought we'd be red zone last week, really. And we were seeing some more deaths. Again, the deaths are typically in the elderly, some more nursing home deaths, but it doesn't mean that a young person can't get it. Some of our groups, you know, our big groups have been, you know, the 20 to 30-year-olds. And now Ball State will be out, you know, and they'll be doing e-learning for the next semester, so. But Ball State hasn't been our problem. Our problem has not been in the classroom. There are the parties, the Halloween parties, the big get-togethers of people outside of school, because the kids, the kids aren't the problem. The children are not the problem. I don't see it.
Okay, I want to, I want to clarify something just real quick, too. You guys have, prior to this order, you, you have approved some, and those will still be approved? The ones that have already?
Yes, the ones that have already been approved, we're not going back on those.
Okay, but any, any more?
From, from the board meeting on?
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
You're not going to do any more?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll let Joel talk a little bit, okay?
Absolutely. Good morning.
Good morning, Joel Thacker, Indiana State Fire Marshal, so it's a pleasure to be up here in Delaware County this morning, unfortunate circumstances, of course, for the visit, but as the doctor elaborated, we're up here just to provide support from the state level to the local level. And what we've seen as we've traveled, so we've reached out to counties that have asked us for assistance. Elkhart County, Vanderburg County, Fayette County are a few of those that have reached out to ask us to come alongside of them, work with them on some businesses, whether that's retail, whether that is manufacturing, and other areas within the community, and just really talk about the importance of masks, social distancing, to, to spot check and look to see what operations, plans they have in place, and are they following those plans? And have they had an increase in cases in their facilities? The, the comments that I've heard in just the short time I've been in here are spot on. And, you know, it's, the numbers are staggering right now, and we have to do everything that we can to reduce the number of positives, those in our hospitalizations, and, and the deaths. And to the doctor's point, we have had the majority of fatalities have been in the older crowd, but it, it doesn't, doesn't exclude the younger ones. Early on, we had a 41-year-old firefighter, paramedic from Terre Haute that contracted in the line of duty and died, and over the weekend I was notified of a, a paramedic with Columbus Regional Hospital that contracted in the line of duty and unfortunately died. And so this doesn't discriminate on age, and we have to do all we can. So I'm happy to be here to partner with Delaware County, with the doctor here. I have Kevin Troy from State Fire Marshal's office, as well as representative from the local Fire Department. Again, united front, go out, see how we can educate, review those plans, and provide some additional information, support. If they're having trouble with PPE, kind of direct them where to get PPE, and just kind of go over some of the guidelines that have been recently updated from, from the governor's office.
Very good.
Any questions?
We appreciate you being here.
Yeah, we're glad you're here today. I need his last name.
Could you, sir, could you state your last name again for the record?
Yes, it's Thacker, T as in Tom, H-A-C-K-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Donna.
I believe that the emergency declaration, as you have, addresses a lot of those concerns, and your emergency declaration also prohibits group gatherings of over 50 people at, at this point, and over 25, we'd get in the red, so that's automatically done with your emergency declaration, and there is a mask mandate for all businesses.
I, again, just, could, John, could you have someone in your office keep an eye on the, the governor's plan for the $20 million? Yes. And at that point, we can, I can stay in contact with Jamie, and we can maybe figure out some enforcement.
Yes, we will.
Thank you. Okay, on the emergency declaration, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the emergency declaration and a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Jenny, I sent you a unhighlighted copy for the commissioners to sign, okay?
Okay.
Okay, go for ordinances, we already, we did zero two one. Resolutions for approval, 2020 dash zero four three, resolution of Delaware County Board of Commissioners concerning the name of the Delaware County new jail facility.
This is a resolution that you asked me to draft for the new Justice Center to officially make the name, the Delaware County Justice and Rehabilitation Center.
I'll make a motion, we accept resolution number 2020 dash zero forty-three.
I kind of like rehab better than, but I'll second.
We have a motion to approve and a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Okay, resolution 2020 dash zero four four, resolution of Delaware County, making final determination to assign tax sale certificates to nonprofit entities.
This is the resolution to assign the tax sale properties that were part of your public hearing this morning to East Central Indiana Regional Planning District for development of 1701 West Sixth Street and 226 South Main or in Albany.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the resolution and a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Okay, Department Heads, elected officials, we'll have Kyle Johnson speak first.
Kyle Johnson, Chief Information Officer, GAS Coordinator. We just want to give you guys an update. Martha and I are having a proposed ordinance update that's going to council that oversees our GIS electronic map fund, which is a non-reverting fund. It was set up in 1999, so it's a little outdated. Technology has changed significantly in the last 20 years. Right now, the current ordinance sets the, the cost of GIS data purchase, so when it was initially set up, we didn't have web-based maps or anything like that, so there was an attempt to try to recoup some of the initial costs of, of creating the GIS system back in the, in the late 90s and early 2000s. It also sets the cost for printed maps, so we are allowed to charge a little more because creating GIS maps is more labor-intensive than just printing like a Word document. The issue is it's, it's old, the data pricing is unrealistic, we've only sold a county-wide data set once, and, and it's like $7,500 to, to buy a county-wide data set, no one's going to pay that, even big companies. Since then, there's also a statewide data sharing initiative that's been in place for several years, where we provide our base data, our parcel streets, addresses, corporate limits to the state, it gets combined and added to a statewide map that ends up made available to the public. So our ordinance was kind of in contradictory to that data sharing. The other issue is, like I said, web-based maps didn't exist. Obviously, we use web-based maps a lot, more and more every year. Over the last five years, we've grown our online map offerings considerably. Other government entities have, have taken advantage of this, have provided maps and data to, to lots of agencies, but we had no way of, of recouping the costs of, of my time, the data storage time, and costs. So this ordinance updates that, allows us to charge a fee to these outside agencies. It'll help boost our GIS fund that we use to buy things like aerial imagery, other large data costs, hardware costs that, that we, we require. This will be going to council this month, so just want to let you guys know. If you have any questions or concerns, please get ahold of me.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other Department Head or elected officials? Jim?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Flo from the IT Department, just wanted to give you an update on the new phone system installation. That process has started last week. They come through and drop the phones off for all the locations. We distribute them through the county building and the outlying areas, the only place we didn't get to was the highway, they were closed on Friday, so we'll get them, give them to them. The rest of this week will be, Level 365 will be in the facility to install the county building phones, the EMS one phones, and the highway phones. Those phones and that system is all under one block of phone system and billing, so those are going to be the first group that, that will roll over. And that will be done on the 23rd, the 24th of November. That will just be those three agencies, and then we'll start working with the outlying areas with the 911, the Health Department, and the highway will be included, so I believe that's the DCC. Also, during the last couple weeks, we've decided not to bring the courts, the sheriff, and the clerk's filing office into the phone system at this time, that we were going to wait until we moved to the new jail and rehabilitation center. So that will have to be a timing issue, and we'll have to keep track of those, of that timeline, because to get the phone lines rolled over, it does take a few weeks for that process to be done, and so we're going to have to keep track and keep that in mind on, on that date's officially set out, and that we can give some lead time for Level 365 to process and get those phone lines rolled for the Justice Center. Other than that, everything's rolling smooth, and we don't anticipate any problems for the county building or those other two offices come next week.
Very good.
Any questions?
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Appreciate Jim and Jenny working on this. Looking forward to seeing some new equipment.
Any other Department Head or elected official?
Sharon, I'd just like to say, Jenny, could you let Nate know, I'm sure everybody's been keeping track of what they're doing for Mr. Hall, that we appreciate everything that him and the Veterans Affairs Office is doing for our veterans in this county, and they're doing a great job, absolutely.
Absolutely. Pam McCammon, Human Resource Director, I just wanted to bring attention that our open enrollment for our insurance will be December 1st to December 18th. I will be sending flyers out and emails out and everything, but I did want to tell. So any changes on your insurance, this is the time to do it. Until December 18th.
Thank you.
Want to remind the Department Heads and elected officials that we're relying on you to make sure the employees are wearing their mask and doing everything they're supposed to inside the building, so please make sure that's happening.
Provide an update on Bridge 161.
Absolutely.
Can you go over there and talk?
Or, Micor.
I just want to provide an update, Bridge 161, or otherwise known as the old Smithfield Bridge, since federal funds are involved, NDOT handles the letting and the bidding and/or, anyways, the apparent low bidder is Duncan Robertson at 2.862 million dollars. We have not had a pre-con meeting yet, so I don't know their start date, but NDOT sets their schedule, and their substantial completion date is October of 2021. So I'll keep you posted as we have meetings, and I'm looking forward to this project, it's been going on for quite a while.
You were in high school, I think.
All right. Yeah, that bridge project's been going on for a long time. We have payment of claims, $1,270,534.94.
They move.
Second.
We have a motion to pay the claims in a second. Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
We don't have anyone signed up from the public to make a comment? John, are you seeing anything online?
There's one comment from an Ethan Knapp that wants to know the specific law that grants government the power to mandate articles of clothing and the ability to shut down a person's business if they do not wear a specific article of clothing. I'm having trouble locating anything that grants the government that power. Specifically, it's Indiana Code 10 dash 14 dash 3 dash 29, which is for emergency declarations.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. You, did you email that back?
I will.
Okay. All right. Thank you. If there's nothing else, entertaining a motion of recess.
So moved.
Second.
A motion of recess and a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Recess.